On the agenda tonight, and that's the developer introduction. I'll turn it over to Mr. Feuerborn unless Mr. Gress would like to.
I'll get us started off, Your Honor.
All right, sir.
Thank you very much. The four individuals sitting in front of you at the front table this evening are representatives from Watermark Residential Group and, of course, our very own Mr. Eric Collins from here in Raymore, who is kind of the local council representing this particular group. They wanted to come before the council this evening and introduce themselves and talk about a possible project that they are considering for the city of Raymore. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Gress to make the formal introductions.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all tonight for the opportunity to present to you and chat a little bit. As Mr. Feuerborn mentioned, Watermark Residential approached the city here a few months ago looking for an opportunity to do a project here in Raymore. And so we've been having lots of discussions over the last several months, back and forth, and we thought there would be a great opportunity for them to introduce themselves as a company to the city council as well as kind of a conceptual idea of what the project they would envision here in Raymore as a concept to you all. So I'll introduce from left to right here Garrett Linville with Watermark Properties, Chris Alexander, Julia Taylor with Dentons, which is their other legal representation, and then, of course, you all know Eric Collins. And so this has really been the core group of who we've been working with over the last several months, and I'm excited to introduce them here tonight to introduce themselves and their project here in Raymore. So I will pass it on to Garrett and Chris to introduce themselves and their project.
Okay. Thank you, David. And I thank you all for giving us the time to come in and speak to you here this evening. I'm Chris Alexander with Watermark Residential. And here with my team that has been introduced, I didn't have to do that. That's great. Thank you for doing that. But anyway, what we wanted to do, this is just our first opportunity to sort of have a formal introduction to our company. So we wanted to give you a little commercial on Watermark Residential, who we are and what we do, and then get into the project a little bit. You know, we'll first start by just showing you some of the representative projects that we've done and sort of the level that we provide and intend to provide with this project here. This is a multifamily project. And then we'll get into a little bit more specifics about the site, what exactly we want to deliver for you, and go from there. So maybe we'll start here with, and we do have this presentation up with just a little bit about our company. And you see the two gentlemen there, John Thompson and Paul Thrift, on the right there. They started this company in 1986. We are a privately held firm, and these two gentlemen are involved in our business every day. We talked to Paul today on a call, and although we've been around since '86 and have done quite a bit, both in our home state and across the country, these guys are just as motivated to build our company into what it is today from where they started. And they started as two students at Indiana State University and figured out how to buy a single home, turned it into a rental property, bought another one, had another rental property, and slowly built a portfolio of local properties around Indiana State as students. Once they graduated, they turned their company into a more formal operation and started developing retail as well as more formal residential and some student housing as well. So really, the company's origins are as a small residential developer, but primarily retail. Retail is what they did throughout the '90s. They formed a construction company called Thompson Thrift Construction. And really, throughout the '90s and early 2000s, that was their focus. In 2008, probably the worst time to start a new venture during the economic downturn, they formed Watermark Residential. And Watermark was really, at that time, destined to be a luxury Class A multifamily developer where we would build the project, we would buy the land, build the project with our construction company, and then ultimately manage it with our professional management company. So we do that today. We have 450 employees. As I said, we're based in Indianapolis, Indiana, but the majority of the work that we do is around the country. And I'll show you a map here of some of our locations. We are actually not new to Kansas City. We've done two projects here, and I think some of the group that's here in the audience today visited our Edgewood project here recently, a couple of weeks ago. And that's a 276-unit project that we are in the middle of construction on. We just have turned over our first building and begun some leasing on. It's going very well. And we'll turn that, the rest of the project over and the other buildings toward the end of the year. In 2019, we started in this market with a project called Tiffany Square, which was 276 units. So we're familiar with this market and have looked at Raymore as an area that we wanted to continue to grow. But as you can see on the map, all the different locations over the years since 2008, when we started this company, we've built 13,000 units and over 50 projects. We have probably by the end of this year will be nearing 60 in terms of total completions. So John and Paul took this from a very small venture, never knew where they would take it, but ultimately, here we are today with a pretty large operation that, again, focuses on, you know, the development, the construction, and the property management of the multifamily. I'll let Garrett here now maybe get into some of the images here of some of the products that we've done that you see on the map.
Thanks, Chris. So I'm planning to walk through just a few examples of this product type specifically that we're planning to bring to Raymore. So what you'll see a picture of here and a few other pictures are three-story structures and that product type that we call the classic product. So over the last decade, multifamily housing has really made a big shift from renting by necessity to renting by choice. All the renters have moved to a more luxurious product. They desire all the amenities, the pools, the valet trash, the spacious floor plans. And so that is what this product is geared towards. So you can see a few of the amenities we have here. We have enclosed stairwells for all units. We have walkout balconies and porches in every single unit. We have high-quality architecture that our architect custom designs for every site. We have premium interior finishes. And additionally, we look to create a community atmosphere by placing all the buildings close by, adding parks in between them. And you'll see on the site plan that we try to represent that here as well. So I'm just going to scroll through a few example pictures of some of our properties. Stop me if you have any questions. So to walk through a few of our interior features, all of our units are Class A premium features. Some of those, for example, are gourmet kitchen countertops. We'll do granite or quartz in some of the upgraded units. We have stainless steel appliances. We have top-of-the-line, modern plumbing fixtures, tiled showers, glass doors, granite and quartz in the bathrooms as well. We have nine-foot ceilings in every single unit. We have the wood-inspired flooring throughout the building. We have walk-in closets with custom wood shelving. We have the large two-inch blinds, and then we have a full-size washer and dryer in every single unit. And here are a few pictures of some of the interiors of our units. And just to name a few of the community features that we bring to every community that we create, we have professionally decorated clubhouses with TVs, kitchens, conference rooms, technology centers. This is where we met just 10 days ago when we walked through the site. We have Wi-Fi hotspots throughout the clubhouse and pool area. We have 24-hour fitness centers with top-of-the-line fitness material, which I know not everybody saw, but we actually went this afternoon, and the fitness material is all there now. We actually got the last truckload of all the fitness material. We have swimming pools with cabanas, poolside hammocks, entertainment areas. We'll have fire pits, grill areas, game areas, courtyards with water features, pet-friendly spaces with dog parks and dog spas, bike repair shops, bike parking areas, gated access, 24-hour maintenance on-site. We have valet trash, which I like to mention is one of my favorite features. I actually lived at one of our properties, and every day outside of Sunday, you have a trash person come up to your unit and take your trash away, so you don't have to spend time carrying it to a dumpster and enclosure across the side. They'll come to your door, pick it up outside of your front door, and take it away for you five days a week or six days a week. And then lastly, available interior cleaning and security checks when you're traveling just to make sure everything's A-OK. So here are a few pictures of our clubhouses and amenities. And again, stop me if you have any questions. And so just to jump back to where we started, we've met with the city a few times, and we started off with a site plan that looked like this. It was a little bit more separated. It was more of a quick density study that we'd put together. And we'd also shown up with a farmhouse-style elevation where it was all white and limited stone on the bottom, more of a skirt to the building. And we took the feedback from those meetings that we needed to beef it up. We need to add more architectural interest. We need to increase the quality of the materials that we had. And we came back with an updated rendering that took the stone all the way up to the top of that building there. We added a few more architectural endpoints where you can see that bump out there to add a little bit more interest to that building. We upgraded the sides and added chimneys that go all the way up so that way that side face is not so calm. And we updated the color scheme. Just another example. And then to walk through the upgraded site plan, so we took a look at the comments, and we decided to showcase some of the amenity areas a little bit better. We put the units closer together and created more of a community feel. You can see up in the pool area, you have our clubhouse, our fitness center, and then an example on the bottom left, which I know you can't see great up there, of what a typical pool area would look like for us. And we do these professionally decorated pools at all of our projects with cabanas, with TVs, grills, string lights. And it's really one of the big selling points if people come to our properties. They see that, and that's their wow factor. Next, you can see the dog park just east of those two buildings that surround our clubhouse area. If you guys are familiar with the site, the southwest portion is a detention area that is full of different easements, storm sewers. So we really consider that undevelopable, and so that's why you see it kind of have that weird Oklahoma shape, so we're avoiding that area. Then move over, we have an area listed as B in the center of those four buildings. Typically, in these areas, we'll have hardscape, maybe a pickleball court or some sort of amenity area, a seating area that, like a sunken plaza with grills, a fire pit, string lights, just a place to kind of come hang out and be a community within those buildings. Then also, you'll see a lot of smaller structures in between. Those are detached garages. They're skinned the same as the buildings, and they're available for rent, and they're dispersed amongst the site for access for everybody. And then I think the last thing I want to touch on is the east. So we actually own all that parcel to the east, and we have a little bit extra space. And so to be cognizant of the neighbors to the east, we've used all that space as much as possible to create a buffer area over there as well as a detention space with landscaping around it. Any questions on the site plan?
And I just wanted to say, you know, we've rattled off a lot of features here for you, and we know that's important as you look at this project. You want to know the quality. But we have 4,500 units. Obviously, we've built a lot. And I don't say that in any of those statistics to brag. I just say it to let you know that we've done this a number of times across the country, and we have a lot of experience. And on every single project, our owners, our upper management, our construction people, they tour every project, study them, and understand, how can we be better the next time? We have almost 10,000 residents across the country. We are constantly surveying them to understand, how well are we doing? What can we do better? And a lot of these features that you see and that we're offering here is not just necessarily to provide the latest and greatest, but it's based on research that allows us the knowledge to know, okay, how can we continue to build a better product and build a better community? So I think from a feature standpoint, there's a lot of study and obviously research, as I said, that's gone into it. The second piece of it is, we manage these ourselves. So in addition to providing the latest in terms of features, we want to provide the latest in terms of customer service. Garrett mentioned valet trash. That's something you may or not, may not be familiar with, but essentially, you put your trash outside your door every day, and we'll come pick it up for you. Concierge-type services, trying to go above and beyond on the management side to provide in addition to high-quality features but high-quality service. And then the last thing I'll mention is that we are, and if I wasn't clear before, we're a vertically integrated company. We construct all of these projects ourselves. So we're constantly learning as a contractor, how can we get better? And what you see and what we're proposing here is based on all of that knowledge that we've sort of built on over the years. So I thought it should be mentioned, you know, everyone gets hung up on all of the features itself, but there is a lot that goes on behind it in ultimately providing a happy resident and one that's going to stay with us long-term.
Yes, Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for everybody. Excellent presentation. Looks very interesting concepts you have here. Just a couple of questions regarding your site plan and the layout you have here. I'm curious, the existing basin that's there and then the conceptual design here for the other detention pond, the existing one, is that dedicated for the shopping complex with the Sam's Club and Office Max, or would this structure also utilize this?
So on the detention facility that exists there currently?
Correct.
I don't know if it's all for the existing commercial to the north. I know a piece of it is. So I don't know to what percentage they drain there, they don't. What I do know is there are easements coming from that property that lead into this, so I'm assuming there is a portion of it. And we, our engineer helped us put this together, which is why on the left side of the detention you'll see a detention pond expansion. They're assuming you need to expand that just a little bit. And also, the site kind of crests in the center, which is why they've planted a detention pond as well on the east, which is most likely oversized, but they're being conservative to give me out the space.
Mr. Catterett.
Thank you, sir. Garrett answered it all correctly. The property to the north, which the white building is actually Sam's Club, if you look at the west two-thirds of the Raymore Galleria, would drain to that front detention basin that Councilmember mentioned. There's also a detention basin to the east of the Sam's Club, right in there, that the east third of the Galleria site would go into that detention base, and then all the water crosses through this site, making its way down towards the Timber Trail subdivision.
Okay. Outstanding. Okay, thank you. I was, the way it was depicted, to me, it just looks like the, whatever drainage or infrastructure would be going underneath the parking garage and things of that sort just north of that basin. I was just curious, you know, very technical, but just curious. Sorry, getting in the weeds on that. And then about the complex itself, what was the floor plan? How many bedrooms? What was your typical square footage?
Yeah, so the amount of units, there are 300 units. These are three-story buildings, and then they stack perfectly, so the footprint is the same. So you'll have a one-bed above a one-bed, above a one-bed. There are 300 units. I think the average square footage is just over 1,000 square feet. Chris, correct me if I'm wrong.
It's about 1,000 square feet on average.
All one-bedrooms?
No, so this is a mix of ones, twos, and threes.
So your one would be 719, 720 square feet. Your two would be 1,100, and your three would be 1,300.
Okay.
And this is a mix of about 40, 50, 10. So 40% one-beds, 50% two-beds, 10% three-beds.
I see.
If I might make a suggestion, when staff was visiting the Northland Complex, the Element, if you all could perhaps provide us this digitally along with the insert as far as the leasing rates, we could share that with the council tomorrow.
Perfect. That was the other question.
It shows the floor plans and the lease rates.
Premature, but just curiosity on that. And then the last question I had, early in your presentation, you mentioned some products you have in the area already. I think I jotted down Tiffany Square?
Correct.
Was one, and the other was Edgewater, I think?
That's Edgewood. It's the Element.
Okay.
It is the one that we were just talking about. Tiffany Springs is on North Ambassador Drive, northwest side of Kansas City, probably about 10, 15 minutes north of the one on Berrybrook Drive by the main event we call the Element.
Okay, I know where you're at.
They're both in the same general area up there, just a few minutes apart.
And then my final question, why Raymore?
I was going to let you hit that one, but, okay. So we look at a number of things when we go outsourcing new markets, and Dave Inglert, who is our acquisitions team, isn't here. He'll speak way more eloquently on this than I will. But some of the things we look for is we look for great access, and there is great access to major interstates right here off of this exit. We look for access to employers and job growth, which we see all over Raymore. We look for good schools. We look for good demographics and high incomes, and we're checking all the boxes here in Raymore. And we really think of this site specifically with the commercial and the grocers and everything just to the north of us, this makes a really good fit of a transitional use of multifamily to come from commercial to multifamily to the single family to the southeast and to the south.
You've done your homework, or either Mr. Gress prepared you very well. So thank you.
Mr. Berenson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Townsend, that last question was a good question. Thanks for asking that. Great presentation. Thank you all for coming tonight. Just a few questions. I will, if you don't mind, for the public record, what are the approximate lease rates for the one, two, and three-bedroom apartments?
So right now, we're anticipating the one-beds to be around 1,100 to 1,200. The two-bedrooms, around 1,400 to 1,500. And the three-bedrooms, around 1,600 to 1,700 or 1,800.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. And a couple more, just small questions here. So just so I understand this, the detention pond that's on the right side, on the east side here, that will be a water feature that has water in it year-round?
I'm not exactly sure. Our engineer has drawn it as such right now. I don't know how it'll end up with the engineer they have to do out there, but my understanding today with the preliminary site plan is yes, it'd be water.
Okay, and then the spot on the left, the southwest side of the screen here where the expansion pond is, what will this property look like? Will it be partially treed? Will it be mowed? Will it be just tall grass? What's the intent for that area?
So that parcel is included in our purchase, and the site plan does not show it well.
Okay. Yeah, I couldn't really quite tell if that was part of yours or not, so.
Yeah, so our plan is to landscape completely around it as well as provide the construction access to the south and the secondary access to the south. So both helpful for engineering as well as the looks for our future residents. The plan would be to landscape that as we go the rest of the property, at least externally.
Okay. I mean, that's our front door, so we've been paying attention to that quite a bit. We obviously want to work with whatever requirements there are related to drainage, but as much as we can do to dress it up, we're very interested in that.
All right. That concludes my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Olman.
Good presentation. Obviously, you build a very nice, quality product. I was very impressed with the photos and how you've presented yourself tonight. A couple of questions. One, do you, your property management, will they live on the site? Will they live in one of these buildings? Or will they be an eight-to-five person that's there then or available by phone? How does that work?
Yeah, they'll be typical eight-to-five hours.
Okay. And do you anticipate asking the city for any type of incentive for this project?
We do.
Okay. That's everything I've got, sir.
Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Councilman Townsend asked a question I wanted to ask earlier, and so I wanted to dovetail off of that when he said, why Raymore? And so I'm interested to know, has there been some market research where you see there's a need for that in the city or that you can be able to fill your units out this way depending on price point, that sort of thing? In other words, is there a need for this? I guess would be my question.
Sure. So when we find a site that kind of checks all the boxes in terms of what we look for, we go out and we look at a lot of different competition, other people who are offering similar products or things that would represent the same type of renter, and we look for strong occupancies there. And we see that throughout Raymore and nearby communities. We see occupancies in the high '90s. And when you get up past about 95, we consider that very strongly leased and showing that there is demand. Additionally, we look at population growth, and we see the population is growing. And then I think probably lastly in that argument, we look at job growth. And throughout our industry, there's an accepted ratio of five jobs equals one multifamily unit of demand. And with the job growth that we've seen in this area, there is strong demand for multifamily, overly so even past our developments' needs.
Okay, thank you.
To follow up to Mr. Jacobson's question and to my earlier question as well, good grief. What was my question? Sorry. What was the trigger that turned your attention to Raymore? Was it anything that we were doing as far as publicizing our city? Was it your own research of, you know, expanding your radius to see what opportunities exist in the marketplace? Kind of give us a little insight on what drew your attention to us.
We are, we work with local real estate experts on a regular basis. If we like a market, like we do the Kansas City market, we'll continue to see available sites. And frankly, we were introduced to Raymore through this available site. What we will do once we identify it is we do a quick underwriting. So Garrett mentioned all the different factors that we look at. We'll quickly underwrite, do you meet this? Do you meet this? And if you check all of those boxes, not you, but the site, we move forward. And that would be then engaging the land seller, having a discussion there. We won't get an approval internally without having all of these boxes checked. So for us, it absolutely starts with an available opportunity, and then as we studied Raymore and we got to learn more about it and how much you exceeded the requirements that we have, that's why we're here before you today.
Thank you.
Ms. Delgoon.
Thank you, sir. Quick question, actually a couple of questions. I thought that I heard you mentioned gated community. So will this be gated? If so, will there be gates on each driveway? Kind of where in this plan would that be? And then second question, just kind of looking at this that they passed out to us, I'm curious, are these different buildings? Are they different interior finishes? You know, what kind of makes the difference in these price points?
Sure. So in terms of the gates, typically, we'll vehiculately gate, vehiculally a word, we'll vehiculally gate the entrances to the project if we feel that there's a need to either separate our project from wherever we are or stop through traffic.
Is that a pricing sheet?
It's for the Element, yeah. So on this right now, we're not showing any gates, but they're an easy add for us. If that's something that you guys would think would be positive for this development, we don't see there being a ton of through traffic here or really a need to separate ourselves given how far that access point actually is from all of our units. But if it's something you guys like to see, we could definitely add some vehicular gates here. And then in response to the Elements pricing sheet here, and let me compare rents really quick, so they are the same exact buildings. So with staff and the mayor, we toured the same exact buildings that we are offering to build here in Raymore. So we have four building types. We call them As, Bs, Cs, and Bs, and they're just different unit mixes inside. They're all three stories. They all generally are front-loading. They're all skinned the same way. So they are the same buildings, and actually, the project that we're proposing here in Raymore has upgraded architecture on the outside, more stone, more architectural ins and outs. And in terms of the price points, we are typically looking at the market and assessing what is available there right now and where the rents are there and where we relate to them. At the Element, we've been through that a bit longer. We've seen where the market is. We've been able to sign some leases, and those are just showing us where they're at right there. There's nothing different in the product type specifically. It's just the market telling us where the rents are currently.
And I would tell you, when we underwrite, we will be more conservative. We won't, if we believe that we can push rents or get higher rents, we'll assume the lower rent. And as we get into the market of the recent history, that's how it's worked. Our pro forma rents that we would underwrite with, but our guess would be when we finally get under construction and start turning over our first units, that we're going to be ahead of that 13 to 18 months down the road when we first start getting you. of that thirteen to eighteen months down the road when we first start getting units to lease.
Go ahead.
So, I think maybe, maybe I didn't ask my question clearly. Thanks for that answer, you answered more questions than I asked.
Just for answering another question.
So like, for example, looking at this sheet that they shared with us, in the one-bedroom apartments, there are three different rates, and I can see that one is a little bit, you know, that they're a little bit different sizes. My question is, does that also mean that maybe that one that's the cheaper rent is going to have the lower-end finishes, and the higher rent's going to have higher-end finishes, or will they all have those top-of-the-line finishes that you were talking about earlier? So, other than square footage, what would be the difference in the price of the two-bedroom at the top of the list versus the two-bedroom at the bottom of the list?
Sure. So, I think Chris has a list of finishes in front of him there, so if we need to get into more detail, you know, we can do so. But really, it is just square footage, we have the same base package for everything, we don't lower them for different, for different units. So I'd say for ninety percent, they're all going to be the same. We do select ten percent that we upgrade, and then we do top-of-the-line finishes, you know, better countertops, better cabinets, upgraded bathrooms, and things like that, where we take it a step further, for those who are looking for a different package, a little bit more luxurious, and so Chris could probably give a few examples of those exact items, but that would be the only separation, it's an upgrade and never a downgrade.
And we don't have to get into the weeds of that, I was just curious, what was, what was that difference? And, you know, like, for example, looking at the plan, maybe if I was in the apartment right next to Sam's Club, would that be a little bit cheaper than the one that has a beautiful view behind it?
You hit on a point, and I think that's the only other thing I would, I would mention and add to what Garrett said, is sometimes it is location in the building where, okay, we may see that a unit isn't leasing, and we need to discount that slightly, but we have another unit that's leasing very quickly, like today, we spoke to our leasing folks up at Element, and the three beds on the first floor have all leased like that, okay? That's a unit we can push rents on, and as we get new, new units delivered to us in the buildings that are coming, okay? So that's where some of that differentiation may occur, and that's just typical leasing.
Additionally, on the, on the first-floor units, there are what we call fenced-in first-floor units, we used to call them puppy porches. It's like your own personal six-by-ten space, where it's seated, where it's maintained by our maintenance staff, and you get kind of an outside fence there, where you could, you know, let your dog outside, or you can go put a girl outside, and you can go be outside. And you get that upgraded space on the first floor, which, while talking to our leasing staff today, that's actually why those first-floor units lease so fast, is because they're the biggest three-bedroom units, that have the most space outside, and kind of a mini yard.
The only other thing I'll add to this whole subject is, you know, again, we're rattling off finishes and kind of bragging about all the things that we can do. It is not our intent to take any of these away, and we will not. We're always trying to raise the bar, and this list of standard finishes is exactly what we will do in these buildings. So, they will not be pulled off the table, if we have a budget issue, we have to figure it out another way, but what we commit to is to provide these finishes, and that's what will be provided.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Circo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was on the same subject matter she's on, like you said, you're not going to rail, you've got, you know, three different tiers, three different costs, three different costs, four different costs, but you're going to keep with the same, what you're talking about, types of countertops, the types of finishes. So when you have three different pricing, it would be to me tough to do that for every one, if you've got pricing, so I don't know if we're going to get one certain pricing out of these three, will we go this standard for all one-bedroom, this standard for two-bedroom, and these, this building, if you guys want to build, you won't have them that different?
It will not be different. We do not cherry-pick which units get which finishes.
Yeah, I'm just saying, on this, of course, we got three, we got five, we got three for the three-bedrooms, so different cost, different square footage.
Different square footage, different location, those are primarily going to deliver, or be the reason for the differences.
For example, first-floor units tend to lease faster because they have those extra yards, and we found that third-floor units lease faster than the second-floor units, because if you're okay with stairs, you'll go to the top, so that way you don't have any neighbors, and you kind of have a better view. And so, that would be some of the differences in location, and also, you know, close proximity to the pool. Sometimes, that's an upgrade for people, and they'd be willing to pay more for being closer to the pool area versus being, you know, farther away and maybe closer to the dog park.
So these are going to have stairs, no elevators?
These will be stairs.
All stairs?
Correct.
You did mention dog park, dog amenities somewhere here that would be regulated, so you keep it clean, dog stuff's picked up, it's not just laying out there. I mean, you guys want to regulate that yourselves, or would it be to the tenants?
We do regulate that ourselves, we have a, you know, like a lot of managers do, we have the DNA program, you know, so we can track down who leaves their poop out, you know.
Yeah, what part is, on the blueprint, what part would you run for your dog parks in your areas?
If you can see my mouse, I'm circling it right here.
Okay, that's hard to read from here.
As centrally located as we can, but it would be all private for our residents.
Okay, thank you.
You want to borrow my glasses? It actually says dog park there. Oh, oh, okay, all right, okay, I got you. Anybody else have any, Mr., yes, Mr. Holman.
So, one more question, I'm curious about your, in your company's history, if you have a policy or a precedent, and any examples of any, in other communities that you've been located in, community involvement beyond the community that you bring to us? In other words, what type of involvement going forward would you anticipate your company and this, this facility being involved with the city of Raymore? We have a lot of opportunities, we certainly have just built our new venue up at Hockridge Park with the amphitheater, and as well as local sports teams and tournaments, et cetera, et cetera.
Sure. One example, in Fayetteville, Arkansas, we have a project down there, and we'll host a Thanksgiving dinner in concert with the city, and allow public to come in and participate in that Thanksgiving dinner. And I know there are a few other examples that are similar to that. We task our team with being involved with the community and hosting community events, and we actually, in some of our properties, have a group called Apartment Life that lives in one of our units, and they sponsor community events, both public and private on our properties. And then another example, in Lyon Township, they have a kite festival every year, this is in Michigan, and Watermark is planning to sponsor one of the kites.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, Mr. Fairborn, this is probably your final comments on this topic, but where we're at in the P and Z process, am I ahead of myself?
You, not mine, sir. Mr. Zer has been in my ear here on, on some things, just, I think it would be a fitting conclusion to the evening to just kind of give the council a bit of a timeline, rather than the actual getting down into that level of detail, but tonight was meant to be a meet and greet, so the council could be familiar with the group, should they choose to come forward with this particular project. Obviously, they're pretty heavily engaged in it. The next steps would more than likely be to, this particular property is not zoned for this usage, so it would have to come forward for rezoning to multifamily from commercial that it is. The council will recall that this particular property is redevelopment project number four, it is actually within a TIF zone, so it's not at all insurmountable, but it is something we have not had to address before. The steps after that, as the rezoning is taking place, Councilmember Holman had asked something of a detailed question about, would they be having an ask for this particular property? The council is very familiar with staff's recommendations and background relative to multifamily and what occurs there. Those negotiations would be ongoing as the rezoning was taking place. The rezoning would probably be a joint application, depending on this particular group, of course, right now it is held by Block and Company. More than likely, they would be the primary on asking for the rezoning. But in the meantime, we would be working on those levels of details that would need to come before the council with any sort of a development agreement with the end-user, and that would encompass any incentive that they were asking for, what, a little bit heavier on what the final project would look like. It would encompass final estimated cost, public participation, and incentive. Does that kind of answer your question, Councilmember?
In detail, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Delgoon.
Thank you, sir. I had thought of one other question. One of the things that we've kind of talked about previously with new developers, especially with rental properties, is I would like the opportunity to look into maybe some properties that you have had for several years, to kind of see some maybe current pictures of upkeep of those kinds of things, just for my information. I know you said the one in North Kansas City you're currently building, the other one in the Kansas City area, what's the approximate age of that, and what are some that you've had that maybe are a little bit older that we might be able to look into?
So, the one, the Tiffany Square, that was complete in August of 2019, but we do have a strong portfolio of older projects that we'd be happy to take some pictures of, or share, they're just, they wouldn't be in Kansas City, so I don't know if you guys would be willing to travel, or we would just provide pictures currently of them.
Yeah, some pictures, or just some names and locations, so we could do some high-tech internet research, you know? Thank you.
Are you sure you don't want to travel?
I'd be happy to go, you have any properties in Hawaii, Greece, maybe?
Naples, Florida.
Naples, Jupiter Islands.
I second that motion.
Still got time to ski?
Well, if there's nothing else, thank you all for your presentation tonight, it's good seeing you again, and glad the council got an opportunity to meet you and be introduced to your project. You guys have brought it a long way since our initial talks, so hopefully we can move forward with this, but time will tell, okay? Can't make any commitments yet, but, you know, you guys are working on it, and you're working on it really hard, we appreciate your dedication to that.
We're not leaving until we get a commitment. Now, thank you for your time, appreciate it, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much for your time, I think I'll have to take stock up in Hawaiian bros with the amount of times that I've been there so far, so, all right, thank you all.
And we will have for the council, I know they'll provide it promptly tomorrow, and we'll have the brochure from up at the Element, which gives the floor plans and a little bit more information.
Excellent. And we're more than happy to schedule another tour up there, and maybe, you know, extend the invitations out a little bit further this time. I think, I think it went well, and it's nice to see it in person, kind of see the elevations and what they would look like, so more than happy to coordinate with the team if there's another tour that'd be worthwhile.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. We have, we don't have, this was the only item on our agenda tonight, but we generally like to open it up for discussion in the event that there's something other, item B or other. Anybody have anything? If there's nothing else, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you all.